...visitors or visit now. I don't know yet. Maybe. What do you think?
He's here. He's here, but he's not here.
All right, consider motion to approve the minutes of the last board meeting from March 21st.
So moved.
Had to move, have a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor of approving the minutes. The bottom could say aye. Aye, all opposed. All right. Let's go on to financially, Ms. Bartlett.
I just passed them out. Did everybody get one? Nothing really unusual. The few things that are over the, we should be at 50% of the budget right now, the few things that are a little bit over that are mostly things that have offsetting, like sales is higher, which is a good thing, well, revenue expenses is higher as a result. And merchandise sold is higher, but merchandise purchased is as a result. So that's kind of a good thing, good thing. I'll be happy to answer any questions if they've got something specific.
Do you see any red flags here?
Payrolls run on target, that's a good thing, because that's, you know, a big part in advertising's run on target. That's our two biggest things, so. We still have issues with the telephone, we're still working on, I guess Sherry will give us an update on that, but we're paying the rental fee for the equipment plus the regular standard bills for AT&amp;T, so right now, so that makes that whole expense feel a little higher.
Very good. Have any updates from committees, board members?
We're going to take the insurance later also.
Yes.
Discussion item.
Okay, that will go into our discussion items. Simple View training update.
The board approved the expenditure of the $2,000 to bring in the representatives from Simple View for training, and they came in on the 10th and 11th. It was really informative, I will say that. It was a lot to cram into two days because we were starting from scratch. So I think I personally have a better understanding of the power of Simple View, and it's going to be when it's a paradigm shift. But ostensibly, I think what probably sold the powers that be that made that initial decision was it is an all encompassing platform where you can put in your consumer efforts, so all of our visitor inquiries, all of our walk-in guests, all of those responses, requests for information. We can put in our financials, we can put in our sales efforts, we can track our marketing. As a manager, I can, it's called traces, but I can assign tasks to staff, and staff can assign tasks to one another, so we can share that workload. If done properly, if everybody, I mean, we're at the chokehold of people putting in the information. I mean, the data has to be in there for you to process the data. So I think that's the paradigm shift, and I think that's where we got run off the rails sort of in the process, but if done correctly, it really is a beautiful thing. This is something that is specifically meant to track this type of activity, so they know what it is that a DMO is looking, what's important to us, and everything is custom fit and tool to do exactly that. So now, our charge, my charge and challenge is to make sure that the staff, every single one of us, every single day, logs into that dashboard and inputs the data, and that we start doing that from this point forward, that we also work it into our work schedule to backlog, because that is important information for our members and partners. We would be able to at any time give them a benefit summary that says, "Your property was presented," or "Your destination was presented X number of times this fiscal year" as a possible lead. You had this many mentions on, in marketing or on social media, and here's the earned media value of that. We can really give them with just a press or with a run of a report, we can give them an actual value to the services that we've offered them. So it really is powerful, it really is good. It doesn't come cheap, but that's what we're charged with now. It was a two-person team that came in to train us, and it was all day, and we took very few breaks except for lunch. So I think now, we probably have a firm enough footing to step in and start taking advantage of their webinars. They have something called a Brainery, which is like an online college course that you can go through and dig a little deeper into what you're doing, but I think the trick is going to be just to make sure that we retrain ourselves, that every day, we're logging into the dashboard, we're putting in the information that we have, and we're putting it in accurately, and that we're also looking at that data. And then, because you can have all the data in the world and look at it and have very beautiful reports, but if you're not utilizing that information, then you just have pretty reports. So then, in turn, we have to look at what we're doing, what the reports say, and say, "Okay, well, what does this mean to us? How does this, how is this going to impact our media buys? Or how is this going to impact the services that we're able to offer, the Perdon or the Hampton or places like that?" So in my executive report later, we'll go through, I printed out an example of some of the reports, and we'll go through those as well, but that's the Simple View.
Were there shortcomings in the software?
Not that I could, see, it's not very user-friendly. It is not something that you could just sit down and think, "Oh, okay, that's, you know, this is what you do," because they've got their own proprietary terminology for what that is, but once you, you know, once they give you the secret handshake, you're like, "Oh, okay, I get it." Now, I went home and slept, and then came back and, you know, was feeling foolish of myself, and I thought, "I got this," and I was like, "Stephanie, I need a senior citizen assist in the front office." But yeah, it's just one of those, you just have to retrain yourself.
Do you feel this is something, that Simple View is something that's going to help us put heads in beds in the future?
It certainly can, and when I, in my summary, I'll give you an example of just a couple of ideas, you know, that ran through my brain as I was seeing the power of those reports. "Oh, okay, we can do this, or we could do this," and really does fall in line with that marketing plan that was created with, you know, those metrics of where they want us to hit and report and whatnot, so. While I wish I could wholeheartedly say it's worth the investment, I think there are probably ways that we could get that same information at a lower cost, but we're sort of in for a penny and for a pound at this point. So to do that would involve incurring a lot more costs, so I feel like if we're invested in this and we utilize it, we can then, after we satisfy the terms of our contract, we can look into pulling back on things that are great, and they're shiny and pretty, but maybe not functional for us in our market, and sort of à la carte, and just make sure that we are paying just for what we're going to use and for what's right for us.
Right. Sounds like you get out what you put in, so.
How much longer do we have on that?
They stagger, so with our, and we have our CRM contract, I'm going to bring it down here, in November, and that's all the data, the data parts. And then the CMS is the website. The website is what we still have until May, I believe. So there's different, and then there's a licensing contract. There's three separate contracts under the umbrella of the Simple View. So the first one that comes up is in November.
So do we have to make sure we get our bag ready?
Yeah.
And decide what to do after that?
Yeah, and it's not necessarily fun work to, you know, it's, so, but it is something that we could, we could bring in some unpaid interns in the hospitality program. A Simple View understands the value of their name and of their brand, and so they offer an accreditation, so you can go through this Brainery program online with them. So in conjunction, you know, that, in conjunction with having an intern come in and input our data, then that person can graduate from hospitality with a degree from SFA, but also with an accreditation from Simple View. So if they're looking to go out and get a job in traveling tourism, that would be a role. So that's the value that, you know, it's not costing us any extra that we can offer to an intern to give them some more value to their effort.
I really like the idea of interns. Doing that. Do you, you know, do you feel that this is something that we can do without it being too cumbersome on the staff, pulling the staff away from other things that we want them to be doing? I mean.
I only know how to be honest with you.
Be honest with me.
Okay. I feel, and I am, I count myself when I say this, you're as busy as you want to be in a day, so it really is just a paradigm shift. So it is, it is changing your habits so that instead of coming in and getting lost in your inbox, you come in, you look at your Simple View dashboard, and you say, "Okay, for 30 minutes, I'm going to do this." And everything that you do in Simple View is an investment in time, so you don't have to repeat that again. So once it's done, it's done, and then you can start making that work for you. So, you know, we each have different tasks in a day that are more important and are more, you know, we have, Joanna has to do site visits, she has to do those things, so she's not right there at her computer. However, there's a lot of time that she is up there and not necessarily inputting data, just like there's time that I'm at my desk staring out the window, having great thoughts.
And we all did that.
Yeah. But it's just a, you know, smack in the face, and say, "No, I need to do this." So it's just retraining, it's just a retraining thing. So yes, 100% think that we need some interns in here, because I don't want us all to just be, you know, data entry, and nothing wrong with that, we all need them. But I think that especially at this part, I think there is something to be said for the person that is going to be using that data to be the one to input it, so that you can really immerse yourself in that, in the importance of getting it in there correctly and what it all means, and you kind of, you get so involved, and then you can step back and you can see the whole picture. So, yeah, I think it's, I think it's going to be worth it if we can find a good balance between having some interns help us out, but still having that staff person be the lead, so that they can.
They're not to beat this death, but is there, I mean, does the staff seem in good spirits about it? I mean, I know they take on more work, but I mean, I don't want to demoralize them by...
That's what you're doing.
By overloading them or doing something that they are already cynical about because they think it's busy work or something.
I don't think anybody, that has not been communicated to me, that anybody sees it as busy work.
The benefits are down the line. I mean, it's not always an immediate reward.
Right, it's an investment, and I think it is daunting for some of the staff. I think it's a little bit overwhelming, because it did come at us fast and furious in that training, and it is very easy to get lost in it, but if you take a step, take a beat, take a breath, and just dive in where you can, then your brain is going to figure out how to make that make sense. Your brain's going to translate it in your own internal dialogue, "Okay, well, this means I click this doohickey, and then I get this out of it."
You know, the one who does the Brainery online course, that's kind of extra, it's a big part of it.
No, it's part of it, it's part of what we're doing, so I'm going to, I'm going to go through it, I'm going to learn everything that I can, I'm going to be smart fans about this. I will own Simple View now. But I'm going to get all the value out of it. But I think it's, it's an overwhelming task, it's not undoable. I'm also of the mindset, you know, we get glad in the same hands that we got sad in, so. I think at that point, you just look at the workload that you have to do, and then you look at the time that you have to do it, and you, and that's time management, and that's what we're getting these page apps for.
Do you think by the next meeting, you'll have a understanding of what parts of Simple View we might look at going forward, and what parts we might, might not utilize in the future with those contracts?
I do, and I'm going to make it a point to make sure that it's an item on the next agenda.
Make sure the juice is worth the squeeze.
True.
All right, anything else on Super View? Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to Ms. Bartlett, insurance update.
I met with Buck and Pam at the city, and they reconfirmed what we had talked about in February, that the TML insurance covers us property-wise, liability-wise, and the DNO, that are all required on our city contract. The only thing that is not included in that is the extra policy we were carrying on the artwork, mostly the displays upstairs that have the, the stuff misture still dominated in those cases and everything. We had an extra policy on that. And they are attempting to add that to the TML policy, because generally, you'd get a better price on the policy if it's tied to something you're already paying for. It's a package deal. And they are looking into that, because that policy does not, I should have looked that up. I think it doesn't renew until July or August, so we've got, we're still covered on the old one, it just hasn't expired yet. If they had gotten this, if they'd gotten that done early, we could have just canceled the other one, we got a little bit of a refund, but I don't think it's significant. But right now, the city is, the workman's comp's included with our payroll, the property is already on, they own the building anyway, there's contents available on that. One of the things we do need to try to work in the schedule is an inventory of just even the stuff in here. If the building burned down, we really don't have a good list of all of that, and...
How about directors in charge?
That's part, that's included, according to the city, that is included in, they have something that covers like city council and Nenco Board, and we are lumped into all of that. We are considered volunteers. I mean, all, all directors are included, are considered volunteers, so it's included in that. And John had arranged to get a policy from CDH, I think, and it's on my desk, but I have not paid it yet, because I wanted official to talk about it with everybody, so that the city has assured us that it's covered, so I don't think it's necessary to get a separate policy for that.
All right, confirm that, if any, we all cancel that, the policy that we entered into. Thank you. Always a good segment. Okay, next, we'll go into discussion of our, the marketing RFPs.
We are in unofficial baby watch, so Stephanie is unable to be here. So, and Joanna is ill as well, and at the doctor, so, but Stephanie did leave some notes. My intention was to have her lead the discussion since she led the, the marketing presentation. So what her notes say, three prospective marketing agencies presented, did everybody have a chance to watch the videos or see the presentations in person? So it's Hancock, Point A, and then Route Two Advertising, which is an independent out of Tyler. On April the 3rd, three agencies were invited to present in front of the board, each for 20 minutes, with a 10-minute Q&amp;A session following. Presentations were recorded and sent out to the Board of Directors and CDB staff for those who did not be in person. So I guess now, the chair wishes we could open up discussion about the different presentations.
Can you go into executive session on this one?
I don't think so. I think I need to enter a motion till we're, we're ready to vote on the, the actual, which one of the three. But we did, if everyone has seen the presentations, is there, Stephanie's not here, but was there any, have any questions about the scope of it or anything? Anybody have anything? I mean, we, I think the presentation went pretty well from, from all three of their aspects, so that, liked on all of them, but if we, if we don't, no one has any discussion, I guess we entertain a motion to...
I had a comment to make. In private conversations with a few of you, I had mentioned that Stephanie had brought to my attention that in our current usage of Point A Media, that we were repaying to use agency time, so designs each time we reprint it. That was our understanding. I asked her to go back through the invoicing and confirm that, and I'm glad that she did, because I was mistaken, and they are charging us redesign fee, which is fine if they're not recharging us for that artwork, which was what she and I both understood, so if I told you that, I was mistaken, so that that is in your mind as a deciding factor. According to the presentations, with designs from Hancock or Route Two, we own everything outright, there's no question, we don't have to ask for permission, we can use it on a t-shirt, we can use it any way we wish. If we wanted, if we needed to resize it for something in particular, there might be a charge for that, that's understandable.
For their labor?
Yeah, for the most part. And with Point A, it may or, we may or may not own it, depending upon the licensing, so it would be on a case-by-case basis. So if we wanted to use it on a t-shirt, we would still need to call them and say, "Hey, we want to use this design."
What does that mean, with the licensing? Are we talking about things that they're, and I think I understand this, but are we talking about things that they're licensing outside of Point A? Are we talking about licensing something that they designed for us?
I believe it would be like the use of a font, maybe, that they purchased for commercial use, or if they were utilizing other things in their design services. I don't believe that they maintain any right to license our logo or...
Or like a slogan.
That, they might. I mean, that would be a good question to ask them, but I just know the phrasing that they used was, "You may or may not own that design," it's a case-by-case, so.
Which one do you feel gives us a bang for our buck?
Again, I only know how to be honest. I feel like based only on the presentations, Hancock came very well-prepared. I feel like we could take either one of those concepts, it's in our nature, or we've got a knack for that. We could, in a day's time, we could go into the national market with that and not be embarrassed. We would hold true, and we'd probably see a lot, get a lot of play out of that. We could run that on HGTV, and I'm sure, you know, it would look right in place. They just have a very clean, classic, professional aesthetic to their design work. Not to say that Point A doesn't, I just didn't have an opportunity to really see where their thinking was, and I think maybe that's what might benefit us, being a staff of our size, not that we're without creativity or ideas, but it would be nice to work with an ad agency that's already been thinking about it. They're that much ahead, you know, on the game plan, that they're like, "Hey, this is the direction," and...
They're looking forward and showing us what they're seeing, which is really helpful.
So to answer your question.
If you were to compare what they lay out as far as their expenses and where they would put money, would you say Hancock over the other?
I would still say Hancock. And again, that's not to any discredit of Point A. I don't know Route Two, I think Route Two is going to be more of a "Why are you telling me to buy?" kind of thing, so that's still more CDB-driven. I think Chris Hancock, he is a consummate professional in the field, I think he's got a good gut as to where, and he and I have had some conversations in the past about, you know, what his line of thinking has been in media buys to date, and where I would like to see us maybe grow, and he's been open to all of that. We've been able to have, you know, discussions where we don't necessarily 100% agree with one another, but we understand that that's, you know, we could set egos aside and just look at really, logistically, I feel like we need to be here because of X, Y, and Z. Okay, I see that. So I, my, my vote would be of extreme confidence in Hancock.
They took a real risk. I, I've worked with both companies outside here, and they both do great work, and Point A does fantastic work, and has just an amazing creative department, but Hancock took a real risk, and I felt really blown away by the ideas that they came with, and I kind of don't want to pass those up.
I worked with both as well in my other life, and I agree, they're, they're both fresh, look good, and it was like a perfect match on the harmony or something, I felt of them, right? With Hancock was in lock and step with what we're, we're trying to accomplish. I mean, they're, they're already there, as you said, tomorrow, we can, we can, we can, there's no ramp up, it's where, that's...
And the fact that we still own it.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I wanted to say we've got a knack for that.
Yeah. I got a t-shirt in production already, so, I know, but at any rate. Okay, any other discussion comments we want? If not, then I think I can entertain a motion, sounds like maybe to award the advertising contract to Hancock? Is that how we would word that?
I'll make that point. I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor of awarding that? Advertising contract to Hancock, is going to probably say aye? Aye. All opposed? No? Good, all right. Sounds good. All right, I'm, I'm excited about it, again, you know, at me, we have a knack for that, so I like, I like it as well.
It's in our nature.
Yes, absolutely.
I would have, you know, been happy with that.
I think it will connect.
We can add both of that.
I think it connects with, I think that'll connect with, with folks. Excited about it. All right, with that, Sherry.
Okay. I'll just ask them, even though it's recorded, we're going to let Stephanie or Ms. Lina, maybe, that's marketing chairperson, deliver that news.
I can do that.
Thank you. Stephanie's busy. Okay. Executive, executive directors report. That's me. I have reached out to a contact from my wife, the in before Nacogdoches. His name is Jen Stone, and he was with Texas Parks and Wildlife magazine, asking if he had ever thought of doing any kind of feature article on Nacogdoches, to find out, he's always wanted to, and as a result, he works things on his end, and we believe that August, September is a combined issue. There'll be a feature spread on Nacogdoches in Texas Parks and Wildlife magazine, which, when we started to work with them in my prior destination, I really wasn't that excited about it, but we only ran ads, we didn't have any featured content in there, but every time we ran an ad, it exploded. It has a huge readership in, for that demographic. It's one of those that they keep those, it's like a Southern Living for outdoorsy people, they hold on to those as a resource, and so it's really, and it's cheap to advertise. So in addition to this feature article, we're going to, I'm going to present that to Hancock, and that, and it's in our nature, would be a perfect tie-in to that crowd. Having said that, the way that they want to do the article is they've assigned a writer and a team of photographers that they like to tie in with a local. So Mike and I sat down to discuss who that local might be, and he suggested Jeff Abt. So I reached out to him on Monday, like yesterday, he was busy doing his taxes, so I'm going to reach back out to him today to see if he would be willing, but basically, the reporter would shadow him as he goes around, and sort of to take in, we felt like he could really pay homage to the history of Nacogdoches, as well as the outdoors, and because of his experience as a writer, he would understand better, and he's got a great personality, and he really has a heart and a passion for the product, so really excited about it.
Do we currently advertise with them?
We do not.
So if they were to do an article, I would assume we could buy an ad right next to that article, that could...
I will look into that, it's a great idea. We should, we should have enough time.
There's a lot of what they read there, and by the way, the people here, they all...
That's true, that's true.
You run those things adjacent, yeah. Part of the day, you run those things adjacent to the art.
And they do, you know, they'll have... I would agree that the following month would be a better bang for our buck, because the repetition is what, you know, people might read it one... the repetition is what, you know, people might read it one issue, and you said it's a joint issue.
It's a, for that one, it's a joint. It's in August, September.
So it may, like, it's in their mind, it's kind of bubbling around, and they don't take action on it right then. But then, as they see it the next issue, they're like, oh, that's right, I was going to check into that. And so I think perhaps the best bang for our buck would be the subsequent issue.
And then that would put us into our next fiscal, which would be in our next campaign with Hancock.
Before we could do that.
That's true. I mean, really, it is so affordable, and the best thing about their advertising packages are, they combine everything. So you get print, digital, and then they'll do specific issues. So they'll have their lake fishing issue, they'll have their hike and bike issue, they'll have things that you can really, you can tailor those ads, so that we've got a knack for it. You know, that dialogue at the bottom, it could really be honed into the content of the topic of that magazine issue. So anyway, that was good news. In front of you is the Smith Travel Report. I was happy it came in yesterday because I didn't think it would come in in time for the meeting, but numbers are up again, the one that looks with the pretty colors. So for the month of March, our occupancy was at 10.7, and that Rev part, which is Revenue per Available Room, is at 9.1. So those are the two indicators that we really look at. The other ones are nice as well, but those really are the mark. And if you can go over on the back there, year-to-date, we're up, we're up by 10%. And occupancy is 7.1, 7.1 in that Rev part, and then the running 12 months up as well.
I think if you look at the running 12 months, that's extremely encouraging. 2017, we're down 10%, 10 percentage points, and we're up 8.5 on the running 12 so far here. So, I mean, that's an incredible swing for us, and I know there's many factors for that, but it's very encouraging.
And it's kind of the opposite of what we, some people were afraid would happen with the Purdue.
Right. I was very cautious, especially when we were budgeting, because I felt there would be, initially, there would be a draw, a cannibalization, if you will, of some, with opening of a new property in town. And I thought it would balance out, I thought it would level out in the long run, but I really didn't think that there would be, that that would be the effect, and that has proved to be 100% wrong so far. So...
Every day and all.
Yeah.
Maybe that might be a wrong decision.
No, not at all, not at all. Do it every day. But the, you know, it's encouraging. I think that, like I said, there's many factors for that, but I think with, like, the fam tour that we've done, that's bringing in outside business that isn't, wasn't necessarily going to be here. And we've had very good response from that and pick-up. And I think continuing that, things such as that, I'm happy to be a part of any kind of fam tour that we want to bring in the future as well, because it helps, it helps with bringing in some of those things. And I think that's part of what has happened, that I think certainly the construction on South Street being complete helped us as well with some transient, and there, you know, the oil and gas factor is, you know, oil and gas is ramping up as well. And so there's a lot of positive momentum that's helping us. And just, the future looks great. I mean, the STEM center at the school is going to attract more folks as well. I mean, so we're, it's encouraging. My indicators from a hospitality standpoint, economic indicators as a whole for Texas is very, very positive. So, you know, hopefully that will continue in these Texas as well.
And we're really trying to do everything that we can, put a lot of energy to get our numbers up, because there, in the summer, there will be a bit of a slide back if trends follow. I mean, hopefully, again, we can be proven wrong, but trying to anticipate that and sort of work around, look at what we can do to fill in, to shore those up. The phone situation. It's the guilty part of this job that is not fun. But our thought was that we could bring suddenly again, and that would be at a better value and a better quality of service. That has been problematic from the beginning. They didn't seem to really want the business, nor did they really want to try and noodle out, I think, how they can, ways that they could work with this historic building and historic Brick Streets. And, you know, it's just part of the price we play for having such a great historic visitor center. But they have tried, I will say that. It has taken longer, and just yesterday, they finally came in with a router and finally called it, said that we can't do it. So through Elliott Electric and Ryan Futter, he's the one that's been working with us, we are going to stick with AT&amp;T. We're going to, they're going to run fiber for us, which is still not going to be...
Through that.
It's just, it's...
To the boarding.
Yeah.
It just goes to the boarding.
It's going to be to that corner of my office, but I don't think that's a technical term. It's not going to be as high of a quality as what we would have gotten in suddenly, but it's going to be a lot better than what we have. So this is one of those things that we could probably have found a least expensive solution to the problem, but it would not be a long-term fix. We would be in this situation again, as technology caught up to that. So this fiber is going to be something that will, it's technology that's going to last us a little bit longer. There's a five- to six-month wait time for that. So we have pulled our service hours with them to accommodate the change in price from that original agreement with them. And it's, I mean, that's pretty much what we had to do. There wasn't a lot of choice. We could totally embrace our history and go for a back and smoke signals and carrier pigeons. I think we're going to see numbers go down if we do that. We just, we've got to have computers, we've got to have phones, and we need some consistency. Because right now, you know, pretty much it wants to take a 15-minute coffee break because that's when our computers go down.
The poor Simple View people and the internet down here.
Yeah. So anyway, it's first-world problems, but there is a solution in mind, and it's going to be a long-term fix. And so that's that. In other news, some of you may have heard about a dog, and his name is Charlie Doges. That is part of my Travel and Tourism Certified Tourism Executive Capstone project, and I also wanted a puppy. So it was in the Venn diagram of my world. It was an overlap. But basically, Charlie is a marketing tool to promote Nacogdoches as a pet-friendly, family-friendly destination. So for my Capstone project, I'm going to be making a marketing plan, a one-year, five-year, 10-year plan involving Charlie. But Charlie just happens to be real because I get extra points for that and a puppy. So my family and I have adopted Charlie. He is brand-new. He's two months old, and he's a French den, so his mom is a French Bulldog, his dad is a Boston Terrier. There was a love that was meant to be. And he's very, very cute, and he's still learning things, but he's not barking, he's not yappy, he's very friendly, has a horrible work ethic. He naps on my desk most of the afternoon. But we're going to be able to really utilize him. He's got his own social media platforms. I've got him, and I am paying for this, so the CDB is not incurring any cost for this. And it's coming out of my pocket. But he's going to have a little collar camera. We'll be able to tell, show the sights of Nacogdoches and tell the history of Nacogdoches from a very cute point of view that, and people can actually come in and see him and play with him and interact with him.
What market are you trying to reach with it?
It's a family market. It's leisure tourism, but it's just to get that niche. Really, it's that millennial market in that Austin area. They like to travel with their pets, and so there is a big need for marketing those destinations. So, you know, Charlie's going to go to the brewery and have a root beer on Trudy and Night, and so we'll, you know, be able to take pictures there. But it'll just be a small marketing, sub-marketing plan to utilize, just to hit sort of a niche market. And then I can get my Capstone project completed.
Are all of the hotels, the town hotels pet friendly?
Some more so than others, and that's something that we get asked a lot, you know, what is the different pricing for things like that? But I think all in all, most of our downtown destinations and shops are very pet-friendly. So certainly, I think we could benefit from, you know, adding those, you know, certain markation on our literature and collateral, so that people know for sure.
Is there some official pet-friendly city designation for...
Sure there is. Through that, like, I could check that with the ASPCA maybe, or one of those.
I know more than ever, especially young people, younger travelers are, you know, they can't bring their dog, they don't come, you know.
We are, we're seeing in one year of operation, a gentleman request, people who are asking, is a winery pet friendly?
I think it's a great delivery system to deliver the message. Marketing so much nowadays is trying to catch attention. That's part of it, you know, and instead of just, you know, you know, the in-your-face kind of marketing, that's a great way to get the message across through a puppy, you know, and, right? And absolutely, I've seen in my, my business world, pets are very, it's a much larger segment of people, bring them and or want to. So I think it's a great delivery system to get around that, this, we're advertising Nacogdoches, using that as a means.
Yeah. And the long-term plan, which probably won't be that long-term, in actual, in the paper that I have to turn in, it will be, but my oldest daughter is a cartoonist, and then my degrees are both in early childhood education. So our plan is to work together and write a series of children's books based on the history of Nacogdoches, so, and using Charlie as the main character. So it'd be Charlie and the Nine Flags, and Charlie and the Brick Streets, and Charlie and the Mound Builders. But there's a real way that we can translate these historic stories to a really young audience and sort of incite that enthusiasm.
If there's a designation, foreign cities have art pet friendly. Surely we have a book on, and maybe we could attach that to a lot of our literature to pick it up. People who are into that will recognize it, and people who are not.
They won't care.
They're not as biased.
You didn't mention the Lone Star Pro Food.
Yes, this community never ceases to amaze me with its generosity, but Lone Star, Pro Star, Steel Wright, reached out to us after a NEDCO meeting last week and offered to provide Charlie with food for life.
So you're a sponsor.
Well, I am not, because I have been here since December. I mean, I've all have received some very nice wonches. Nobody said anything about for life. No, anyway, it was very generous and waiting to, Steel wants to take a meeting with Charlie, so.
Tell them again about Lone Star.
Oh, thank you.
I was reading the other day on the same note, Ritz-Carlton actually has an ambassador in the lobby. It's a dog that they, it's their ambassador, and they have some little cute name that ties in, you know, that, I can't remember what it is at the moment, but the dog lives in their lobby. That's how far we've, this is, this has gone, this has shifted. It used to, you know, hotels, no dog, and all that. It's, so it's, it's a trending more and more that way, so.
So his social media is Charlie Doges, his LinkedIn is Charles Doges. It's important. So anyway, and he's here usually in the afternoons, because that's when he naps, and so that's when I can have him up here and still get some work done. So anyway, just so that if people say something, that's what that is. In front of you are some of the reports that I came in this morning and ran off, and these are one of those, you know, three-click shopping things that are available on Simple View. So the big stapled packet is what they call their executive summary, and we can custom make reports as well if there's things that you don't care about. This is all based, pulled from our consumer data, so it's from our people that come in and fill out our guest login sheet or request information on our website. This is where all of that information is compiled, and so you can go through and you can see, like, our top 20 by state. So this was run from beginning of fiscal year to date. So almost, you know, 50% of our inquiries came from Texas, and then you can see the breakdown from there. But then it breaks it out into subsets, and if you dig down even deeper, it goes into history. And so you can look at our top 20 inquiry draws by antique interest, and there's one for film festivals. So this is information, again, that we can provide to other people, that organizers of the film festival, and say, well, here's where, you know, you got hits on information on our website, maybe you want to target, you know, where you didn't have so much information or so many hits.
I can see something like this being useful for marketing, to target geo-pensing certain things that target a market too.
And we can also go through, there's some European, Canadian and European laws that are being passed currently that deal specifically with digital correspondence that we would still be held accountable for, even though it was passed in Great Britain, and it has to do with, like, a double opt-in to be emailed and the length that you have permission to email people, even though we're in the great U.S.A. and that law was passed in Great Britain because of, you know, digital, nobody owns space. We would still be held accountable for violations against that. So, you know, if nothing else, from that Simple View training, we now have a plan of attack to be very proactive and make sure that all of our requests for email addresses are in compliance with all of those laws that are out there, so that we don't run any risk of being in violation, and that we're always respectful of those consumers requesting information from us. But then it also allows us, I had a conversation with the mayor, and she expressed to me that, you know, it's her feeling that we don't have a hard time convincing people to come to Nacogdoches one time. Our problem or our challenge, she didn't say problem, our challenge exists in convincing them that there is enough to see and do to come back a second time, a third time. That's, that runs true across the board. I don't think she's alone in that perception. But we can manipulate the data, and certainly with great ease, use our Constant Contact platform that we send out our e-newsletter. We can go back through and find people that actually came for a visit, say, we hope you enjoyed your stay during the month of March. We'd love for you to come back in June for our Blueberry Festival as an added incentive, print out this coupon, and enjoy a 10% discount in our gift shop. And then we have, like, trackable data. So we could easily email that. My thought, I believe there's great power in personal correspondence, as much as time allows, and I think that's one of those things that we could do, a postcard campaign that says the same thing, but it's hand-signed by staff, or it's something, and we can do that on a smaller, because we're also, you know, referring to cost of postage on that as well. But I think those are small, small things that we can do that might have a big impact on increasing that return, return visit, and that's as a result of these reports in Simple View. There's a consumer summary report, and you can see a breakdown of interest across our fiscal year, and they can sort of see the ebb and flow of interest. And again, that's going to help us in our marketing and our media buys.
I think on this in particular, it's interesting, it's April, we're halfway through the month, and April's already on pace to... the month and April is already on pace to be, to have much more inquiries generally than any other month. And it's on this report, which if they're inquiring April means they're probably traveling in May or afterwards, I think that's a, that should be a positive indicator for it as the first part of the summer.
It's very true and you can see, you know, a lot of people are coming here for antiques. I don't know that that's really a market that we pursue a lot, but I think it's something that we could capitalize on and, you know, do some pointed marketing and get more people to come in. But it enables us to have a lot of information at our disposal that we can use for marketing but also that we can provide to our members and partners and give more value to their partnership with us so that we can go to the chamber and say, you know, give them the numbers for the Blueberry Festival and the Blues Festival. And then there's a lot of things that, you know, if we're, if we were spending any money in promoting this as a golf destination, we can look at this and say, well, that's great for the 16 people that have expressed interest in that, but what is the return on any investment that we might have on that?
It surprises me, history is our highest number. I did not know that.
Yeah.
I was telling you.
And antiques right after that, I mean, same, I guess same perhaps demographic or that go in and end, I guess. Yeah, I mean, it's very good and like, especially to help, to market.
And just in the last couple of days, people have been able, have reached out to me because they're doing a business plan for a new business downtown or Kelly Daniel was preparing a piece for, next Friday I'll be the Fourth Friday Chamber Speaker and she was wanting some facts and I was able to go into Simple View and get her real-time data. She looks super smart in the process. I like those opportunities.
That's worth $2,000.
Come on! For my ego alone, that was worth it. But we did find out, we ran the numbers out of the governor's office. Dean and Runge is a company that provides a lot, the governor with most of his facts for travel and tourism and in 2017 for Nacogdoches County, direct travel spending was $80 million for Nacogdoches County. And for whatever reason, the city of Nacogdoches only reports to 2016, but for 2017, 80, 79.6 million, which, come on, that's 80 million. I thought that was really impressive. Stephanie is not here and the last Joanna's report is that, and this is an example of where Joanna is just gonna have to get an intern and rearrange her work schedule and backdate some information, but you can still see, this is just a summary. And you can look at that economic impact and see that last fiscal year this time, our economic impact of things that were input, again.
Activity report.
It's a single sheet, did you not get one?
Yes, I got it.
Okay. But $3,906,765.90 currently year-to-date, what she has entered only has an economic impact of $1,439,000. But, you know, you can look at that first left-hand column and you can see that we'll be able to break down very easily because this was just a report that I ran because Joanna was out yesterday as well and was unable to put a report, but anyway, so good stuff. Our numbers are looking great. See in your packet, Mike has his very last page. In March, we had 1,596 people walk in the doors upstairs, which is really impressive. We were, we were booking. And a big shout-out to Mike. I don't, I know it's no secret to anybody that he is really an amazing human being, but we had a visitor that had come in from Germany and Mike had engaged them in conversation about Dietrich Roethlisberger. And just was his typical style and didn't, you know, didn't do any more than he would to anybody else, but that person got, traveled all the way back to Germany and it had only been two weeks, but they hand-wrote a really long, nice, sweet card to him, just thanking for, thanking him for his time and just how he made them feel so welcomed. And that goes back to something that I said at Nedco at my report, you know, people, I think it's Maya Angelou that originally said it, but people will forget what you've said and what you've done, but they never forget how you make them feel and I think that's across the board in Nacogdoches, but specifically with Mike. I think that's his greatest strength is how he makes the people that come through here feel. And so yeah, I've yet to find something the man's not good at. Computers maybe, but, but other than that, big shout-out to him.
Absolutely. Mike is a great investor and I can just-
Martin's very forward. A lot of spring and rain, it's central.
Yeah, and Mike did a supremely great job and is still doing a great job and I think word is spreading on his, on his tours because now he's got the River Oaks Country Club ladies coming in for a walking tour. He's walking those ladies too, they're, they wear sensible shoes because they are walking to Zion Hill, they're walking the universe, they're walking. But anyway, my guy. But yeah, he's doing business hand over fist up there.
Awesome. All right, a lot of good, a lot of good positive information here and look forward to looking to the future with Simple View and how we best utilize that and our new marketing campaigns coming up, certainly. There's nothing else. Next meeting will be May 16th, right here at Charles Bright Visitor Center at 8:30 AM and meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all for coming.